Thank you, San. The November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting of the Seattle City Council will come to order. It's two oh two P M. I'm Lauren Alonzo, President of the Council. Will the court please call the roll?
Peterson.
Here.
Sawant.
Present.
Strauss.
Present.
Herbold.
Here.
Juarez. Lewis.
Present.
Morales.
Here.
Mosqueta.
Hi, excuse me, present.
Council President Gonzalez.
Here.
Eight present.
If there's no objection, Councilmember Juarez will be excused from today's meeting. Hearing no objection, Councilmember Juarez is excused from today's meeting. Presentations, I'm not aware of any presentations for today, so we will move to approval of the minutes. There are no minutes for approval today, so we will move to approval of the introduction and referral calendar. If there is no objection, the introduction and referral calendar will be adopted. Hearing no objection, the introduction and referral calendar is adopted. Approval of the agenda, if there's no objection, the agenda will be adopted. Hearing no objection, the agenda is adopted. Colleagues, at this time, we will open the remote public comment period for items on the city council agenda, introduction and referral calendar, and the council's work program. Items one and two, again, items one and two on today's agenda are quasi judicial and pursuant to the councils, whoop, lost my screen, pursuant to the councils quasi judicial rules, the city council will not accept public comment on these two items. I thank everyone for their ongoing patience and cooperation as we continue to operate this remote public comment system. It remains the strong intent of the city council to have remote public comment regularly included on meeting agendas. Excuse me. Just a minute here, my screens are acting crazy. Okay, it remains the strong intent of the city council to have remote public comment regularly included on meeting agendas. However, as a reminder, the city council reserves the right to end or eliminate these public comment periods at any point if we deem that the system is being abused or is no longer suitable for allowing our meetings to be conducted efficiently and effectively. I will moderate the public comment period in the following manner. The public comment period for this meeting is twenty minutes with each speaker having up to two minutes to speak. However, because we have some non-English speakers signed up to provide public comment, which will require translation from Spanish to English, I would like to extend today's public comment period from twenty minutes to a total of thirty minutes. So if there is no objection, the public comment period will be extended to thirty minutes. Hearing no objection, the public comment period is extended to thirty minutes. Speakers are called upon in the order in which they registered to provide public comment on the council's website. Each speaker must call in from the phone number used for this registration and using the meeting phone number, ID, and passcode that was emailed to them upon confirmation. This is different than the general meeting listen line call and information. Colleagues, today we have Cristal Barragan, Spanish interpreter, joining us today to provide translation for members of the public who requested translation services in advance. Cristal will be translating the public comment from Spanish to English from folks who wish to testify in Spanish today. For those folks who need translation services, you will also be given only two minutes to provide your comments. And after your time is up, we will turn it over to the interpreter for consecutive translation. Again, I will call on each speaker by name and in the order in which they registered on the council's website. If you have not yet registered to speak but would like to, you can sign up before the end of public comment by going to the council's website at seattle.gov/council. The public comment link is also listed on today's agenda. Once I call a speaker's name, staff will unmute the appropriate microphone, and an automatic prompt of "you have been unmuted" will be the speaker's cue that it is their turn to speak, and then the speaker must press star six to begin speaking. Please begin by stating your name and the item that you are addressing. As a reminder, public comment should relate to an item on today's agenda, the introduction and referral calendar, or the council's work program. Speakers will hear a chime when ten seconds are left of the allotted time. Once you hear the chime, we ask that you begin to wrap up your public comment. If speakers do not end their comments at the end of the allotted time provided, the speaker's microphone will be muted to allow us to call on the next speaker. Once you have completed your public comment, we ask that you please disconnect from the line, and if you plan to continue following this meeting, please do so via Seattle Channel or the listening options listed on the agenda. I'm now going to translate what I just said into Spanish for the benefit of the speakers who are on the listen line, so bear with me, colleagues.
[Spanish] Modera el periodo de comentarios públicos de la siguiente manera. El periodo de comentarios públicos para esta reunión es de veinte minutos y cada orador tiene hasta dos minutos para hablar. Sin embargo, debido a que tenemos algunos hablantes que no hablan inglés, se inscribieron para proporcionar comentarios públicos, lo que requerería traducción del español al inglés, me gustaría extender el periodo de comentarios públicos de hoy de veinte minutos a un total de treinta minutos. Si no hay objeción, el periodo de comentarios públicos se extendirá a treinta minutos. Al no escuchar objeciones, el periodo de comentarios públicos se extiende a treinta minutos. Los oradores son llamados en el orden en que se registraron para proporcionar comentarios públicos en el sitio web del consejo. Cada orador debe llamar desde el número de teléfono utilizado para este registro y utilizando el número de teléfono de la reunión, la identificación, y el código de acceso que se les envió por correo electrónico tras la confirmación. Esto es diferente a la información de la llamada de la línea de escucha de la reunión general. Compañeros, hoy tenemos a Cristal Barragan, intérprete de español, que se une a nosotros hoy para brindar traducción a los miembros del público que solicitaron servicios de traducción con anticipación. Cristal traduzará el comentario público del español al inglés de las personas que desean testificar en español hoy. Para aquellas personas que necesitan servicios de traducción, también se les dará solo dos minutos para proporcionar sus comentarios, y una vez que se acaba su tiempo, se lo pasaremos al intérprete para una traducción consecutiva. Una vez más, llamaré a cada orador por su nombre y en la orden en que se registraron el sitio web del consejo. Si aún no se ha registrado para hablar pero le gustaría hacerlo, puede hacerlo antes de que finalice el comentario público en el sitio web del consejo. El enlace de comentarios públicos también figura en la agenda de hoy. Una vez que diga el nombre de un orador, el personal desactivirá el micrófono apropiado y un mensaje automático de, en inglés, "you have been unmuted", será la señal del orador de que es su turno de hablar, y luego el orador debe presionar estrella seis para comenzar a hablar. Comience a hablar diciendo su nombre y el tema al que se dirige. Como recordatorio, los comentarios del público deben relacionarse con un tema de la agenda de hoy, el calendario de introducción y remisión, u el programa de trabajo del consejo. Los oradores escucharán un timbre cuando quedan diez segundos del tiempo asignado. Una vez que escuche el timbre, le pedimos que comience a terminar su comentario público. Si los oradores no finalicen sus comentarios al final del tiempo asignado, el micrófono de los oradores se silenciará para permitirnos llamar al siguiente orador. Una vez que haya completado su comentario público, le pedimos que se desconecte de la línea, y si planea continuar después de esta reunión, hágalo a través de Seattle Channel u las opciones de escucha que figuran en la agenda. El periodo de comentarios públicos ya está abierto, y comenzamos con el primer orador de la lista. Recuerde, por favor, de presionar estrellas seis después de escuchar el mensaje automático que en inglés dirá "you have been unmuted".
We will now open up the period of public comment, and we will start with the first public commenter on the list. Again, as a reminder, please press star six after you hear the automatic message of "you have been unmuted" in order to unmute yourself. The first three speakers for today are Danielle Alvarado, Howard Gale, and Kim England. Danielle, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Danielle Alvarado. I'm the Executive Director of Working Washington, the Fair Work Center, offering testimony on calendar item fifteen, the resolution relating to paid time off for domestic workers. Our organization is very proud to have worked with Casa Latina, Hand in Hand, and others to have passed the Domestic Worker Bill of Rights. A key piece of that policy was the Standards Board that gave workers the power to make ongoing recommendations for improving conditions in their industry. I'm here today in support of moving forward on a key recommendation from the Standards Board, that we establish a citywide portable benefits system that lets domestic workers get paid time off when they need it. Nannies, house cleaners, and other domestic workers need time off just like every other worker, and it's heartening to see the budget include five hundred thousand dollars to develop a policy to establish such a system for domestic workers here in Seattle. We fully support the council resolution that gives us a plan for developing a policy that will cover all domestic workers and require hiring entities to pay for those benefits. We know there's a lot of work ahead in the next year to turn these values into policy, and we're excited to get to work. We can learn from the work that's already happened in other cities, as well as build on our own successes here to help make sure this critical protection includes these workers. Thank you again for supporting the five hundred thousand dollar allocation to OLS to develop portable benefits and the council resolution filling out the pathway for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. Next up is Howard Gale, followed by Kim England, and then David Haynes. Howard, welcome.
Good afternoon. Howard Dale, District Seven, speaking on the budget and failed police accountability. This morning at council briefing, Councilmember Mosqueta noted that regarding the two thousand and twenty-two police budget, the council held consultations with a federal court monitor overseeing the federal court ordered police reform in Seattle. This is the same court monitor employed now for over fourteen months who seems unaware as to how many people the SPD has killed recently. The same court monitor who seems unaware of the specifics of the OIG and OPA corruption and failings is reported recently by K O W and the South Seattle Emerald. This is the same monitor who has publicly slandered the minority-owned source of community news for Seattle, the South Seattle Emerald, as being motivated by profit in its critical reporting on the failures of our police accountability system. The monitor has gone to public forums recently and outrageously used SPD's misleading and self-promotional statistics to argue for how well the SPD is doing. It is a violation of the transparency and public trust for any discussions the council has held with the court monitor not to be made immediately public. If the council had the courage to admit the failings of our police accountability system, they could redirect these tens of millions of dollars currently in the budget towards real community oversight of police without having to consult a court monitor, which has now clearly established itself as part of our failed and corrupt police accountability system. We must invest these tens of millions of dollars in a system that provides full civilian community control over police policy, misconduct investigations, and discipline. We must end police investigating police, as so many cities have done post George Floyd. Please go to seattlestop.org to find out how. That's seattlestop.org. Thank you.
Thank you for calling in today. Next up is Kim England, followed by David Haynes. Y después de David, vamos a escuchar de María Sujal. After David, we will hear from Maria Sujal. Kim, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Kim England. I am the Harry Bridges Endowed Chair in Labor Studies at the University of Washington. I am a resident of Council District Six, and I am honored to be a member of the Domestic Workers Coalition. And today I speak to Resolution three two zero two eight regarding Seattle's domestic workers. I am proud to live in the first city in the United States to introduce a domestic workers' ordinance, and currently there's an opportunity before you to strengthen that groundbreaking ordinance by committing to the resolution in support of establishing a portable benefits policy for domestic workers. The resolution intersects with the budget, which includes a proposed allocation to the Office of Labor Standards to address the four recommendations from the Domestic Workers' Standards Board that were presented to the council a few months ago. One of those recommendations is to create a portable paid time off policy. I look forward to working with OLS and the city council to build a policy that is based on a simple and flexible system design that is easy for workers and their employers, that would make it mandatory for employers to pay toward paid time off, portable paid time off for domestic workers, and one that does not require the workers to justify taking paid time off. Domestic workers do the work that makes everything else in our lives possible. Portable paid time off is important for their health, well-being, and safety. Please support the resolution and keep intact the part of the budget that would provide funding to make the right to portable benefits. Portable paid time off for domestic workers is a reality. Thank you.
Thank you for calling in today, Kim. Next up will be David Haynes. This was the David, escucháramos de María, and then, y después de María, escucháramos de Marta Barrientos. David, welcome.
Thank you. Gracias. No más muchos dólares y poquito dólares. Three and a half day work week, seven day pay, take it from the non-working shareholders every three months. Improve the life of the workers. Anyway, I would like to address and hope that city councils could focus some of their progressive revenue ideas by congestion pricing, warm buckets, industrial Burlington, Northern Santa Fe, toxic trains, pulling over a hundred overloaded uncovered coal cars every week. And secondly, I would like to, I live in Pioneer Square, I need to clarify with council about the recent sweeping of Pioneer Square Park in between Cherry and Yesler on First Ave. I hate to say this, but the crackheads and some of their drug pushers have already reclaimed the Pioneer building entrance and sidewalk up against the building where they hide in the dark and smoke crack and trash the entrance and scare every resident with demands of money for drugs. Last night, I counted twenty rats wildly running around Pioneer Square Park, back and forth to the pagoda and to the building, with two rats running in the street to drink from a flooded modern third-world street. Yet there is no rat traps anywhere! So it's obvious there wasn't a true honest forthright diligent cleaning, only a clearing of tents. The crack meth and heroin junkies keep taking over the entrance to my building at First and Cherry and across the street at the most unsafe, godforsaken, public health crisis of a seven-eleven that allows crack and cigarette smoking in the hallway entrance and never does anything about the aggressive panhandling with no mask, blocking the entrance every single late night. Early morning, there is a mobile junkie criminal pop-up of a mini encampment with all these waxed-out psychotic drug addicts spit-spraying, unmasked, blocking the sidewalk and entrances all throughout First and Cherry, yelling, screaming, attacking, shooting, and all of it is echoing through my warehouse echo apartment that ruins the mental health and quality of life, especially when the oldest building in Seattle has been gentrified by a toxic highway on First Ave with...
Thank you for calling in today. Next up is Maria. Sigue María. And after María, y después de María, will be Martha Barrientos. Y después de María sería, escuchamos de Marta Barrientos, y después de María va a ser, perdón, después de Marta Barrientos vamos a escuchar de Ana Torres. After Martha Barrientos, we will hear from Ana Torres. So María, Marta, Ana. María, bienvenida. Welcome.
Buenas tardes, concejales de la ciudad de Ciaro. Mi nombre es María Súchil, desde hace años estoy en el programa de trabajadoras del hogar en Casa Latina. Los trabajadores del hogar necesitamos un mecanismo para tener tiempo libre pagado para cuidar mejor de nuestras familias, como muchos otros trabajadores tienen. El COVID ha empeorado este problema, y vemos la necesidad de buscar maneras de tener acceso a esos derechos. Pedimos que la legislación de los derechos de beneficios portátiles tenga acceso equitativo para garantizar el tiempo libre pagado, incluyendo la equidad para los trabajadores del hogar, ya que tenemos un dominio limitado del inglés y que trabajamos en ocupaciones que no acumulan tiempo pagado, ya que los limpiadores de casas tenemos varios empleadores cada semana y sin tener en cuenta que el trabajador es contratado como empleado independiente o contratista. Doy las gracias al consejo por el apoyo a esta resolución que ayudaría a establecer una política de días de enfermedad y tiempo libre portátil en Ciaro para las trabajadoras del hogar. Lo merecemos. Gracias y buenas tardes.
Gracias, María, por llamar hoy. Thank you, María, for calling in today. We are now going to have those remarks translated by our interpreter, Cristal Barrientos, please.
Good afternoon, City of Seattle council members. My name is María Súchil, and I have been cleaning homes for many years. I am part of the Domestic Workers Program at Casa Latina. Domestic workers need a mechanism to receive paid time off in order to be better able to take care of our health and our families, the same as many other workers are able to do. COVID has made the problem worse, and we see the need to find ways to be able to access these rights. We ask that the legislation for portable benefits include equitable access in order to guarantee paid time off, including equity for those of us with limited English capabilities, and since the nature of our occupation does not allow us to accumulate paid sick days. This is because house cleaners have several employers throughout the week. Also, this benefit should not take into account whether the worker is an independent contractor or self-employed. I thank the council for the support of this resolution, which would help establish a policy for paid sick days and portable paid time off for domestic workers in Seattle. We deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you for that interpretation. Gracias por esa traducción. Next up is Martha Barrientos. La que sigue es Marta Barrientos, y después de Marta Barrientos será Ana Torres. Marta, bienvenida. Martha, welcome. Y Marta, veo que estás en la pantalla, pero tienes que oprimir estrella seis para poder hablar. Trata una vez más, estrella seis, por favor. Okay, Marta, todavía no te escuchamos. Parece que estamos teniendo problemas tecnológicas. Marta, trata una vez más, estrella seis. Bueno, hay que mantener Marta en la línea mientras llamamos la siguiente oradora. Let's keep Martha here in the room, and hopefully she'll be able to work out our technology issues. Let's move over to Ana Torres for now, in hopes of being able to resolve those issues. Okay, escucha la hora de Ana Torres. Ana, bienvenida. Te escuchamos.
Bienvenido a Casa Latina. Mi historia empieza...
A ver, Ana, empieza, empieza de nuevo porque parece que no te, no te estábamos escuchando muy bien. I'm just asking Ana to start her comments over because she's coming in a little gravelly. Adelante, Ana.
Ah, me escuchan. Buenas tardes, ¿me escuchan ahora?
Ahora sí te escucho.
Okay. Ah, mi nombre es Ana Torres. Soy trabajadora del hogar, soy miembro de Casa Latina. Mi historia empieza hace veinte años cuando yo llegué a este país, con muchas dificultades. Mi último hijo nació en Estados Unidos, es un ciudadano. Él se enrolló ahora en los marines y estoy muy orgullosa. Como saben, esta pandemia nos ha afectado a todos, pero sobre todo a los trabajadores esenciales, los cuales no contamos con ningún beneficio, ya sea médico o días de enfermedad pagados o vacaciones. Es por eso que les pido que nos apoyen con la... Ah, estoy nerviosa, pero quiero que nos apoyen con estos beneficios portátiles que es muy importante para nosotros, ya que yo estoy en la cuenta de Aliya, y es una manera muy fácil de yo poder obtener mis días de vacaciones o un día de enfermedad si lo necesito. Solamente quiero saber por escucharme y saber, ¿podremos contar con su apoyo? Gracias.
Gracias, Ana. We're now gonna hear from our interpreter.
Hello and good afternoon. My name is Ana Torres, and I am a domestic worker. I am also a member of Casa Latina. My story begins twenty years ago when I arrived to this country with my kids. We were always working hard and faced a lot of difficulties. I had another child here who is a citizen and who is now enrolled in the Marines, and I am very proud of him. As you know, these have been difficult times because the pandemic has been difficult for all of us, but there is always a sector that is most affected. Domestic workers do not currently receive benefits such as health insurance, sick days, or paid time off, or vacations, for which I am asking for your complete support for the resolution that would pave the way for a portable benefits platform that would be both mandatory and easy to use. I am currently part of a portable benefits platform called Aliya. It is easy to use and easy to ask for sick days without having to provide proof, but it is not mandatory. My question for you then is this: Can we count on you to pass the resolution for portable benefits? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Gracias. Okay, a ver si ahora podemos escuchar de Marta Barrientos. Let's see if we can now hear from Martha Barrientos. Adelante, Marta.
¿Me escucha?
Ya te escucho. Muy bien.
Ay, qué bueno. Gracias. Disculpen, disculpen lo que pasó. Bueno, mire, yo me llamo Marta Barrientos. Buenas tardes, concejal Teresa Mosqueta, y a todos los miembros del concilio. Mi nombre es Marta Barrientos. Limpio casa desde hace mucho tiempo. Agradezco infinitamente a todos por el apoyo que han brindado a las trabajadoras del hogar. Hace un tiempo tuve un accidente en la casa que limpiaba. Me lastimé mi tobillo y no trabajé por aproximadamente dos meses. Para mí, eso fue verdaderamente duro. Sin trabajo, ni cómo pagar la renta, ni nada. Era una cosa terrible por la cual yo pasé. Pero tampoco tuve acceso a los días de enfermedad, absolutamente nada. Y ahora, con la pandemia, me fue mucho peor, sin trabajar y sin tener ningún tipo de beneficio. Como trabajadoras del hogar, nunca hemos tenido ningún beneficio en nada. Por eso es importante para nosotras, las trabajadoras del hogar, tener una plataforma de beneficios portátiles mandatorio, que sea accesible y fácil de usar. Algunas de nosotras, las trabajadoras del hogar, tenemos muchos retos con la tecnología y el lenguaje. Es por eso que les pido humildemente a todos ustedes que apoyen la resolución para los beneficios portátiles y el presupuesto para las recomendaciones del Standard Board de las trabajadoras del hogar. Gracias por escucharme. Dios las bendiga a todos, a todas, y espero que nos ayuden. Gracias.
Gracias, Marta, por llamar hoy. And we will now move over to the interpreter.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Marta Barrientos, and I have been cleaning homes for a very long time, so I appreciate all of the support that you have shown domestic workers. Some time ago, I had an accident of one of the homes that I cleaned. I hurt my ankle and was unable to work for approximately two months, but I was not able to access any paid sick days. And with the pandemic, it was even more difficult to be without work and without any type of benefit as a domestic worker. We have never had any type of benefit, and that is why it is so important for domestic workers to have a platform for portable benefits that is mandatory, accessible, and easy to use, since many of us face many technological and linguistic challenges. This is why I humbly ask you all to support a resolution for portable benefits, as well as the budget allocation for the recommendations made by the Domestic Workers Standards Board. Thank you all for your attention, and may God bless you all, and I hope you are able to help. Thank you.
Thank you, Cristal. Next up is Stacy, excuse me, Stacy Kono, and after Stacy will be Johnny Arenas. This was the Stacy, escucháramos de Johnny Arenas. Stacy, welcome.
Hi, good afternoon. My name's Stacy Kono, and I'm the Executive Director of Hand in Hand, the domestic employers' network, and I'm here to support item number fifteen, Record three two zero two eight, sponsored by Councilmember Teresa Mosqueta. At Hand in Hand, we've been working in Seattle the last three years in partnership with local community organizations and the Seattle Office of Labor Standards to engage in education and outreach for the implementation of the Domestic Workers' ordinance. We are an active part of the Domestic Workers Coalition and proud to have supported the passage of the historic ordinance several years ago. Today, I'm here to support the resolution in support of establishing the portable benefits policy for domestic workers in Seattle. It would enable domestic workers, as you've heard from those who testified already, who have several employers, to be able to take... have several employers, to be able to take paid time and paid sick and personal time off, something that has been challenging for domestic workers to do without losing pay. We're asking the council to support the $500,000 budget allocation to the Office of Labor Standards for all the recommendations of the Domestic Workers Standards Board, including establishing portable benefits. In our experience at Hand in Hand, parents, older adults, and people with disabilities who are hiring entities, they all value the workers in their homes and support creating rights and protections for workers. They understand that fair and respectful working conditions, like paid time off, make a difference in attracting the needed workforce in our households. They also, as employers, need support to manage the work relationships in their homes and value having clear and fair guidance from their local government through things like the Domestic Worker Ordinance and other policies. So I'm just here to please ask your support of the $500,000 budget allocation and resolution to support the Domestic Workers Standards Board recommendations.
Thank you for calling in today, Stacy. Next up will be Johnny Arenas. El que sigue es Johnny Arenas. Y después de Johnny será Andrew Kachap. After Johnny will be Andrew Kachap. Johnny, welcome. Bienvenido.
Estimados miembros del concilio, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Johnny Arenas. Soy trabajador del hogar y estoy trabajando limpiando casas por más de 15 años. Me siento muy honrado de ser parte de este sector laboral. Los trabajadores del hogar hemos estado en una lucha constante por tener derechos laborales como cualquier otro trabajador. Lamentablemente, hace un año murió mi padre. Dejé de trabajar por una semana para asistir al funeral, sin goce de sueldo, por no tener derechos a tiempo libre pagado o días de enfermedad. Regresar a casa con el dolor de haber perdido a mi padre y con las cuentas pendientes para pagar, eso es injusto y cruel. La pandemia nos vio tan duro a todos, pero para nosotros, los trabajadores del hogar, fue otra señal de que debemos seguir luchando por tener una plataforma de beneficios portátiles que sea mandatorio y a la vez que proteja la información confidencial de nosotros, los trabajadores del hogar, que sea administrada por terceros e incluya pruebas rigurosas de ciberseguridad para garantizar la máxima seguridad de la información de los trabajadores. Hoy estoy aquí para darles las gracias por su apoyo que nos han brindado hasta ahora y a la misma vez pedirles que aprueben la resolución para los beneficios portátiles, que daría un respiro a los 33,000 trabajadores del hogar de Seattle. Gracias por su apoyo para el dignificado trabajo del hogar. Buenas tardes. Gracias a todos.
Gracias, Johnny, por llamar hoy. Thank you, Johnny, for calling in today. And we're going to move over to the interpreter. Ahora vamos a escuchar del interprete.
Dear council members, good afternoon. My name is Johnny Arenas. I am a domestic worker, and I am very proud of being part of this labor sector. As domestic workers, we have been in a constant fight to have the same labor rights as many other workers. Unfortunately, my father passed away last year, and I took a week off work with no pay to attend his funeral, all because I do not have the right to receive paid time off or sick days. Coming back home with the pain of having lost my father and with the bills waiting to be paid was unjust and cruel. The pandemic has been very difficult for all of us, but for domestic workers, it was another sign that we need to keep fighting in order to obtain a platform for portable benefits that is not only mandatory, but also one that protects workers' confidential information, is administered by a third party, and has undergone rigorous cybersecurity testing in order to guarantee the maximum security of workers' private information. I'm here today to thank you for the support that you have provided up to this point and also to ask that you approve the resolution for portable benefits that would provide a breath of relief to the 33,000 domestic workers in Seattle. Thank you for your support in providing dignity to the work of domestic workers.
Thank you. The next person is Andrew Kachap, followed by Joe Kunsler, and then Theodore Ellis. Andrew, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, council members. I'm Andrew Kachap, and I'm an attorney at Legal Voice, which advocates for gender justice and racial justice through policy change driven by community partners. We're part of the Domestic Workers Coalition along with Casa Latina and other partners. We thank council for its continued work to advance the movement for domestic workers' rights. The resolution being introduced today by sponsored council member Mosqueta on portable paid time off is another important step in that direction. Current paid leave law, including the Seattle Paid Sick and Safe Time Law, is not well-designed around the realities of domestic work, as the worker members of our coalition have just explained. But we need the council to pass policy innovations like portable PTO to fill these gaps. And we applaud council for stating in the resolution that domestic workers will have a right to portable PTO. And also, passage of this policy aligns with the city's commitment to racial justice, since a majority of domestic workers are BIPOC women. And that's an important part of our movement, given the legacy of racism impacting this industry. So the coalition is excited to work with OLS on this policy, and we appreciate the resolution's timeline that puts us on a track to send a bill to council by next year's budget season, as well as the resolution's commitment of 2022 budget funding that will be vital to help us develop the policy through worker outreach and research. And on that note, it's important for council to preserve the $500,000 allocation in the city budget for implementing the Domestic Workers Standards Board's recommendations, one of which is passing a portable PTO policy. So we urge you to pass the resolution and to keep the $500,000 intact when you vote to approve the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew, for coming in. Next up is Joe Kunsler, followed by Theodore Ellis. Joe, welcome.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me, Council President?
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Council President. I want to take a moment today and tip my cowboy's hat to you. Stand tall, stand proud. Please read "Tackling Zimmerman Hero," and I hope the next city council will crowdfund a tribute to you, or as per Google Translate, to all wise Latinas and strong Latino neighbors. Si, Juan, Google Translate, para todos las latinas sabias y ay vecinos, yatinos, gurtes con respecto a presidenta del concio, presidenta del concio, em, Irene Gonzalez. Me quite, quito el sombrero ante ti, perezqui, perez, ergudo, excuse me, perez, augur, guisco, y tackling Zimmerman hero, y espero que el próximo concio municipal haga un crowdfunding un tributo a usted. With that, I call upon the Seattle City Council to fund fixing your wonderful drawbridges in your budget, sad that Seattle won't, you know, is having the problems that you're having. I want to again thank Council President Gonzalez for defending our democracy throughout her public service on the Seattle City Council. I wish you well and what is next, and I just hope you take peace that I'm very grateful for you standing up to Alex Zimmerman when we had a dark moment in our democracy. Thank you for your service, Council President. I wish you well. Thank you.
Thank you for calling in. Our last speaker who is showing up is registered and present is Theodore Ellis. I am showing that William James registered, but he is not showing up as present. So William, if you call in in the next two minutes, we'll make sure to give you your two minutes. Theodore.
Theodore Ellis is on the line.
Go ahead, Theodore.
Hi, my name is Theo Ellis, District 7, private citizen, not affiliated with any interest groups, any special organizations. I decided to join today's meeting because I actually had an extremely positive interaction with two Seattle police officers today. My family was in trouble. They were professionals. They rushed to assist. They were committed to the safety of our shared city, and I just want to make sure that, you know, the voice of the citizen like myself is heard, strong support of Seattle Police. I know we only have about 17 officers per 10,000 residents. That's half the ratio you see in New York or in LA. So we don't have enough police. If anything, I'd like to implore the council members to not take any dollars from sworn officers, but to, if anything, increase the budget. Without safe streets, families can't raise kids, businesses can't hire workers and operate, none of us can enjoy our public spaces. So again, just a private citizen, there may be thousands just like me who are thinking the same thing. And I just want to say thank you to the police officers, who are the ones who are there during our most difficult moments in life, and they were at the front lines during the COVID pandemic. So thank you to the police for their patience. And council members, I implore you to, you know, think about many of us who aren't joining these calls, but we really love our police. Thank you.
Thanks for calling in, Theodore. Appreciate it. Colleagues, I don't have anyone else who's showing up as registered and present. Again, one individual, William James, shows up as registered but not present, and I am just looking to our IT department to confirm that we do not have any other registrants in the waiting room.
Affirmative, there are no other public comment registrants.
Thank you so much, son. With that, we will go ahead and close out public comment and move to other items of business on our agenda. Next up is payment of the bills. Will the clerk please read the title?
Payment of Bills, Council Bill 120219, An Ordinance Appropriating Money to Pay Certain Audited Claims for the Week of November 1st, 2021 through November 5th, 2021, and Ordering the payment thereof.
Thank you so much. I move to pass Council Bill 120219. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded that the bill pass. Are there any additional comments? Hearing non, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Peterson.
Aye.
Sawant. Councilmember Sawant. Strauss.
Yes.
Herbold.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Morales.
Mosqueta.
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez.
Aye.
Seven in favor and none opposed.
Thank you so much. Let's go ahead and move to Agenda Item 1. Will the clerk please read Item 1 into the record?
And the item 1, clerk file 314367, the application of 41302 Development LLC and the Seattle Housing Authority to rezone portions of the lot located at 14302, 30th Avenue Northeast, and portions of the lot located at 14330, 30th Avenue Northeast, from Single Family, 7,200 square feet to Low Rise 3 with mandatory housing affordability 2 suffix, project number 3023581 type 4.
Thank you so much. I'm going to hand it over to Councilmember Strauss, who is the chair of the committee responsible for this item, to provide us the report.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, this clerk file is a contract rezone application to rezone the property at 14302 30th Avenue Northeast and a portion of the adjacent property at 14330 30th Avenue Northeast from Single Family Zone 7,200 to Low Rise 3. Both properties are currently split zoned between SF 7200 and Low Rise 3. The lot at 14302 30th Avenue Northeast, the applicant plans to develop four townhomes for a total of 21 units. The lot at 4130 30th Avenue Northeast is owned by Seattle Housing Authority and has no plans for redevelopment, but is being included in the rezone application to avoid a narrow strip of single-family zoning remaining on a block otherwise zoned for low-rise. The Land Use and Neighborhoods Committee unanimously approved this application with two changes made in committee. The First Amendment increased the mandatory housing affordability requirements to the full development on these sites. Both the SDCI and Hearing Examiner recommendations included an M suffix denoting the lowest level of affordable housing requirement. Thanks to Lish Whitson of Central Staff, the committee recognized that the higher M2 suffix should have been applied. This change increases the MHA requirement from 7% or $7 per square foot to 9% or $12.50 per square foot. Contract rezones are typically conditioned on future development, conforming to the development proposal submitted at the time of the rezone application. Because the Seattle Housing Authority has no plans to redevelop, the committee also removed that condition from SHA's portion of the rezone. Both the SDCI Director and Hearing Examiner issued recommendations for the approval of this rezone application, and that is the committee report. Council President, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Strauss. Are there any additional comments on Agenda Item 1? Hearing, no additional comments and no hands raised. Will the clerk call the roll on granting as-conditioned the clerk file?
Peterson.
Aye.
Sawant.
Yes.
Strauss.
Yes.
Herbold.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Mosqueta.
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez.
Aye.
Eight in favor and none opposed.
The clerk file is granted as condition, and the chair will sign the findings, conclusions, and decision of the city council. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the findings, conclusions, and decision of the city council on my behalf? Will the clerk please read Agenda Item 2 into the record? And Madam Clerk, I think you're muted.
Thank you. Report of City Council, Agenda Item 2, Council Bill 120216, An Ordinance Relating to Land Use and Zoning, Amending Chapter 23.32 of the Seattle Municipal Code at Page 8 of the official land use map, to rezone portions of the lot located at 14302 30th Avenue Northeast and portions of the lot located at 14330 30th Avenue Northeast, and accepting property use and development agreements as a condition of rezone approval.
Thank you so much. Colleagues, I move to pass Council Bill 120216. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much. It's been moved and seconded to pass the bill. I'm going to hand it back over to Councilmember Strauss to provide the report on this as the sponsor of the bill.
Thank you, Council President. This is the associated council bill for the contract rezone just mentioned in the item previous to this. The clerk file contained the rezone application. This council bill effectuates the rezone and accepts the property use and development agreements and changes the zoning map itself. That's the report on this bill. Thank you.
Short and sweet. Thank you so much, Councilmember Strauss. Are there any additional comments? Not seen any hands raised. Will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Peterson.
Aye.
Sawant.
Yes.
Strauss.
Yes.
Herbold.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Morales. Mosqueta.
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez.
Aye.
Eight in favor and none opposed.
The bill passes and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Will the clerk please read Agenda Item 3 into the record?
Agenda Item 3, clerk file 314459, Petition of Grand Street Commons LLC for the vacation of the alley in Block 14, Joss C. Kenny Year's addition to the City of Seattle, being the block bounded by South Grand Street, 22nd Avenue South, South Coolgate Street, and 23rd Avenue South.
Thanks so much. I move to grant clerk file 314459. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to grant clerk file 314459. Councilmember Peterson, I understand that you have an amendment to make, and I'm going to hand it over to you to make that motion.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, this is just the traditional extra step involved with accepting the conditions to the clerk file. These are the same conditions that we discussed on November 8 and were attached to the Central Staff memo. So I'll make the motion to amend the clerk file to accept the conditions. I move to amend clerk file 314459 by adding the council conditions to the clerk file.
It's been moved and seconded to amend the clerk file by adding the council conditions. I'm going to hand it back over to Councilmember Peterson to address the amendment.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, this clerk file 314459 enables us to approve an alley vacation for the mixed use, mixed income transit-oriented development called Grand Street Commons, located in District 3, near the boundary with District 2. A few months ago, the Transportation and Utilities Committee received a briefing on this project from SDOT, Seattle Design Commission, and developers. Last week, on November 8, the full council had a similar briefing in the morning, and we held the required public hearing that same afternoon. So today is the actual vote to approve it. I support the approval of this alley vacation. Nearly half of the new residential units will be affordable to low-income families. The project is 11 blocks north of the existing Mount Baker Light Rail Station and only four blocks south of the future Judkins Park Light Rail Station, scheduled to open as early as 2023. And again, the conditions are the same conditions attached to the Central Staff memo from November 8. There are two amendments for this proposed alley vacation.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Peterson. Okay, so, uh, okay. Sorry, this is a little confusing. This little procedural dance we're doing is going to be a little confusing, so give me just a minute to get oriented here. So we moved to grant the clerk file. There's been a second. Councilmember Peterson made an amendment to that, and now I understand that rather than pulling that amendment to a vote, there are two amendments to the amendment. Is that correct?
Yes, there are two amendments. Yes, there are two amendments to the amendment. That is correct. And the first one, I think Councilmember Mosqueta will be addressing.
Madam Clerk, can you please clarify for me if I need a call for a vote on the underlying amendment? That information is not included in my script, but it seems like we have to eventually...
Council President Gonzalez, I believe we should take the amendments first, and after we vote on the amendments, then we will vote on adding the conditions as amended.
Got it. All right. Just making sure I wasn't accidentally missing a step, so appreciate that, Madam Clerk. Really appreciate it. Okay. So I am going to go ahead and recognize Councilmember Mosqueta, who has Amendment One. And Councilmember Mosqueta, if you can make your motion, and after it gets a second, we can have a, you can address the amendment.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Colleagues, I move to amend the conditions as presented on Amendment One on the agenda.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to amend the conditions as presented on Amendment One. Councilmember Mosqueta, I'll hand it back over to you to address Amendment One.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Thank you as well, Councilmember Peterson, for your joint work on this effort. Colleagues, I'm excited to bring forward this amendment that I am sponsoring today to the street vacation that would waive the street vacation fee for the Grand Street Commons Affordable Housing Project. Amendment One to this individual's street vacation is a precursor to legislation that my office has been working on with Lish Whitson from Central Staff. That legislation is on the introduction or referral calendar as well for our consideration after budget deliberations. The legislation that we are interested in bringing forward in the future would follow a similar model that we are providing for in the amendment today that adds an exemption for city-funded affordable housing projects. I'm excited about the broader conversations that will happen in my committee in December, along with joint discussions in Councilmember Peterson's committee as it relates to transportation. The amendment that we are bringing forward today is in the similar vein. We are seeking to remove internal barriers to building affordable housing and allow us to save precious affordable housing resources that could be used for building more homes. This amendment aligns with legislation that we also passed in 2018 to encourage the city to prioritize city-owned properties, city-owned surplus property, and use it for the public's good, like building affordable housing. Today, through this amendment specific to this property, I'm excited to be able to help remove the fees associated for areas that the city has right away, when we can help to create an opportunity to build affordable housing, which is all of our goals, creating more housing throughout the city and making sure that we're moving any and all barriers. I also believe that it's more efficient to remove the unnecessary administrative processes associated with transferring city funds right back to the city. City, state, and federal agencies have already exempt from the requirements to compensate the city for the property value of street vacation, and as the council, we have the authority to waive these fees for other appropriate projects. Under our current code, city-funded affordable housing projects are required to pay street vacation fees, so our limited public housing dollars are going right back to the city to pay those fees instead of affordable housing. I'm excited about this amendment in front of us, making sure public housing dollars are able to be used to build housing now. This issue was brought to our attention by Pastor Willie Seals. I want to thank Pastor Seals, who has been working with Lehigh on predevelopment for the TC Spirit Affordable Housing Project on church-owned property in the Central District. The TC Spirit Project requires street vacation, which would typically cost the appraised value of the site. Without street vacation, the TC Spirit Project would create 45 affordable units. With the street vacation, they will be able to build 68 affordable units. However, the street vacation with the Grand Street Commons Project under current code is expected to cost hundreds of thousands of housing dollars. Exempting affordable housing projects from these fees would reduce costs and barriers to affordable housing projects that are creating more homes for community and activating the public realm with art, activity, and pedestrian-oriented uses as displayed in the briefing last week, which I'm very excited about. Legislation making permanent exemption for city-funded affordable housing projects, again on today's introduction and referral calendar, and I very much look forward to working with all of you, Councilmember Peterson in his committee and in my committee, in the next few weeks after budget, to really move forward on this concept that we are introducing here today via the amendment to this specific legislation. Thanks so much for your consideration, colleagues, and your ongoing partnership to build affordable housing as fast as we can.
Thank you, Councilmember Mosqueta. Are there any additional comments on Amendment One? I see no additional hands raised. Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of Amendment One to the conditions?
Peterson?
Yes.
Swant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Mosqueta?
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Eight in favor and none opposed.
The motion carries. Amendment One is adopted, and the amended conditions are before the council. I'm going to hand it back over to Councilmember Peterson, who has a motion to make on Amendment Two.
Thank you, Council President. I move to amend the conditions as presented on Amendment Two on the agenda.
Is there a second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded to amend the conditions as presented on Amendment Two. I'll hand it back over to Councilmember Peterson to address the amendment.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, as I mentioned during council briefing this morning, Amendment Number Two was requested last week by the nonprofit Mount Baker Housing Association. I support this amendment as well. As described well by Central Staff at the bottom of this amendment that we published online, a condition of vacating the alley to facilitate the development of this affordable housing project was to provide 1,500 square feet of space free to the Cultural Space Agency for cultural activities. The proposed conditions implied that the space would be a condominium. However, Mount Baker Housing and the Cultural Space Agency are discussing the best way to transfer that space. They're still discussing that. So in addition to creating a condominium as a possibility, they're also exploring using a structure like a 99-year lease that would ensure the space is available for the life of the building. So Mount Baker Housing, the nonprofit, asked for this amendment to provide flexibility for them to create the most appropriate structure. So that's the purpose of this amendment to the conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. Are there any additional comments or questions on Amendment Two? Seeing no hands raised, will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of Amendment Two to the conditions?
Peterson?
Yes.
Swant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Mosqueta?
Apologies. Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Eight in favor and none opposed.
The motion carries, and Amendment Two is adopted. Are there any additional comments on the amended conditions? Seeing no hands raised, will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of Amendment Two to the conditions?
Peterson?
Yes.
Swant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Mosqueta?
Apologies. Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Eight in favor and none opposed.
The motion carries, and the amended conditions are included in the amended clerk file. Are there any further comments on granting as-conditioned the amended clerk file?
Peterson?
Yes.
Swant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Mosqueta?
Apologies. Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Eight in favor and none opposed.
The motion carries, and Amendment Two is adopted. Are there any additional comments on the amended conditions? Seeing no hands raised, will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the amended conditions for inclusion in the clerk file?
Peterson?
Yes.
Swant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Mosqueta?
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Eight in favor and none opposed.
The motion carries, and the amended conditions are included in the amended clerk file. Are there any further comments on granting as-conditioned the amended clerk file? Councilmember Mosqueta, please.
I just want to say thank you again. This is exciting. I know that we often don't do policy conversations during budget, and this is directly related to items that are very appropriate to go to full council, but because we didn't get a chance to talk about it in council yet, just want to say thank you to Central Staff, Lish Whitson, again, Councilmember Peterson's office, and Aaron House in my office, for the work on this and the future work to come.
Thank you so much.
All the community partners I mentioned.
Any additional comments? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on granting as-conditioned the amended clerk file?
Peterson?
Yes.
Swant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Mosqueta?
Aye.
Council President Gonzalez?
Aye.
Eight in favor and none opposed.
The motion carries, the amended clerk file is granted as-conditioned, and the Chair will sign the council conditions. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the council conditions on my behalf? Will the clerk please read Agenda Item Four into the record?
And the item four, Council Bill 120218, An Ordinance Relating to Property at Sandpoint, authorizing the Director of Housing to execute an easement agreement for a sanitary sewer mainline with the University of Washington, authorizing related agreements and actions to support the development of cottages for people experiencing homelessness on a parcel owned by the city and leased to SP Cottages LLC, and ratifying and confirming certain prior acts.
Thank you so much. I move to pass Council Bill 120218. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much. It's been moved and seconded to pass the bill. I'm going to hand it over to Councilmember Mosqueta, who is the prime sponsor of this bill, in order to address the item.
Thank you very much, Council President. Although this legislation is very technical, I am still excited. This legislation helps us advance a long-anticipated project to create cottages for people experiencing homelessness. By way of background, in 2019, the council approved legislation to lease city-owned property on the former Sandpoint Naval Station site to Lehigh, that's the Low Income Housing Institute, for creation of 20 to 25 units to serve individuals from families making 40% of the area median income. The project will serve homeless families who are children, seniors, veterans, people with physical disabilities, as they are community members, and we're really excited about the cottage vision that has been drawn up for this location and the way in which it integrates directly into community and creates thriving local connected neighbors. The cottages will have living and sleeping areas, lofts, and kitchens, and bathrooms on-site. The community will include common buildings, community gardens, outdoor recreation space, and walking paths. Construction on the cottage is currently underway. They are being built modular, through modules, can't say that word apparently, off-site by students in pre-apprenticeship programs and using vocational training programs. These modules will be assembled on-site by a general contractor. We anticipate groundbreaking will occur January 2020 with tentative opening in September or October of 2022. This legislation helps move the project forward by enabling the Office of Housing to enter into an easement agreement with the connected University of Washington's adjacent sewer